Thank you. We will now open up the Emery City Schools Committee meeting for October 2nd, 2014. Ms. Montora, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Davis.
Here.
School Board Member Miguel Dwin.
Here.
Councilmember Asher is excused. Councilmember Atkins.
Here.
Councilmember Brinkman is excused. Councilmember West.
Here.
School Board Member Affelt, School Board Member Kent, School Board Member Dice, and School Board Member Potts is excused.
Potts is excused, okay.
Yeah, it's Potts.
Okay. All right, thank you. We will now move to item two. Is there any members of the public who would like to address the committee in public comments? None? Okay. That being said, we'll move on to item three. Can I get a motion to approve the July 10-
No, we can't do that. Until the holiday comes.
Oh, we got, yep, yep. Thank you, thank you. Let's move down to staff comments and member comments. Do we have any staff or member comments?
Sure. I just want to invite the public to our Harvest in the Park. It's going to be on Sunday, October 26th, Doyle Hollis Park, arts crafts, face painting, costume contest. And that again is October 26th. And then more to come, but we have a new event. It's called Make a Difference Day, and we're looking for volunteers to come to our parks and do some community service. That's going to be on, I'm sorry, October 25th, Saturday, from 12 to 4 o'clock. And like I said, look for more info on our e-news.
Okay.
Can you tell us what time the Harvest Festival was?
Yes, the Harvest Festival is on, 1 to 4, on Sunday, October 26th.
What are the prizes for the best costume?
(laugh) I don't know what the prizes are, but they'll be good.
All right.
All right. Great. Are there any more staff or committee member comments? Dr. Rubio?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I have two things, really. One is, we, I just want to share with the community and the members of the group that we had a great press conference this afternoon. We had public, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tom Torikson, was here, as was Senator Darryl Steinberg, as was Assemblywoman Nancy Skinner, all to celebrate some additional money coming in for our state preschool program. So for the first time in 12 years of our partnership with the YMCA, we will able, we will be able to fully fund all of our students in the program with support of the state, for the first time, fully, and we'll be able to expand another, to another 20 slots. So it's, it's great news, and we publicly thanked the governor for signing this, and we thanked those members I just mentioned for all their support and celebrating this. So that was this afternoon. And the other thing I want to mention is, one thing I talked to the press about today was the great partnerships that we have in our city, with the city, as a school district. And I shared with them that besides the partnership we have with parents, who have been supporting our district with the parcel tax, which is wonderful, we're really a city of partnerships. And next week, as most of you know, we'll have three days when school is closed. And I just want to publicly say thank you to the city as well for supporting us and giving the parents a place to have their students be for those three days. So the rec center will be open and using the campus at Annie Yates, while our teachers are here for three days, and some heavy, heavy training for the new Common Core curriculum. So I just wanted to say thank you and make sure everyone knew that.
Great. Anything else? I just have a comment. The holidays are fast approaching us, and I just kind of wanted to get an insurance from staff that we will participate in our annual community service with ECAP, either the Thanksgiving holiday or the Christmas or both. So are we, can we still participate in that?
Yeah, and we'll put out a call to all of our city staff again this year for both of the holidays. I think we had a decent turnout last year, but definitely to start a little earlier.
Okay, great.
To let people have that time off, so they can go down there.
Great. And I would ask our superintendent to do the same for our staff, for our teachers, to see if they want to volunteer as well. They have in the past, it's been a great event. Okay, great. And just to kind of follow up on Dr. Rubio's comment with the legislators coming to the site, it was a very, very successful event. After the presentations were given, they actually had a chance to view the facilities and look at how Head Start has done a terrific job with our classrooms, how they have done, doing a terrific job with our, our students, as well as our playground area as well. So they were very impressed. And I must say, I mean, Emeryville continues to shine like a beacon when individuals from the outside come and visit our city to see the great things that we're doing. I was also able to update Senator Steinberg on the ECCL project and what that means, and when the district actually vacates this facility, that this would be a total child development center. So they were very pleased to see that the money that has been allocated towards Head Start is really going to great use. So again, I would like to thank all those legislators who came today as well. So with that being said, any more comments? Member West?
Isn't there a scheduled ECCL groundbreaking coming up?
Yes, it's on the agenda, and I think we'll talk about that.
So we'll talk about the details. I just thought with announcements of the public, but we'll get to that later.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. We will now move into item five, information items. Five A, the intro. I guess the students are not here, so we'll skip that and move to item B, Recreation Center Summer After-School Program. Ms. Montora?
This is Brad.
Okay.
Brad's going to give the presentation, but I just wanted to tee it up a little bit. We are facing tremendous success in our programs. We've gone from, and Brad will get into some of the details of the numbers on how we've grown over the last two years in our summer camp and after-school program. But, you know, it's amazing, even over there on San Pablo in the portable building staff, city staff, working with the school district. It's really, it's been a tremendous effort over the last two years to beef up that program. And also with the city council implementing the sliding scale program, so that we're not turning any students away. We just wanted to go ahead and highlight some of the work that staff is doing. And go ahead, Brad, you can-
Yeah, thanks for the, thanks for the intro, Sabrina. I think just about everyone knows me, but I'll introduce myself. My name's Brad Helfenberger. I'm the Acting Youth and Adult Services Manager in the Community Services Department. So I oversee the Adult Services and Youth Services Division. And this is Allison Bernor. She's the Acting Youth Services Supervisor. So she's the on-the-ground staff person who's onsite at the, at the rec center at all times, just making sure that all of the programs run smoothly there. Yes, and I'm here to give an update, a recap of our, our summer program, as well as an update on the progress of the after-school program. So to start off our summer camp, we peaked at up to 140 participants during the summer. You know, we, it was a weekly camp, so every week varied a little bit, week to week. And to compare that with last year, we doubled our numbers. We peaked last year at around 70. This year, we peaked at, at 140. And we attribute that to not only the sliding scale that was instituted this summer, making it affordable for all Emeryville families and outside families, but we also increased the amount of staff training that we were providing. We increased the amount of activities, and just the overall quality of the program has improved. And it definitely shows in our participation. We provide, we provided camp for 10 weeks during the summer, which is more than a lot of other cities provided. And the reason that we provided 10 weeks is to make sure that there was no interruption of service, so that parents who needed childcare were able to get it. And, you know, it presented additional challenges, but we were able to rise to the occasion. We provided field trips, 14 different field trips, one field trip each week for each group. Some of the field trips, we split them up into various age groups to make sure that the trips were age-appropriate, but other times, they, they were integrated where, where it made sense. We also took every group swimming once a week, so we were down at the pool three times a week for each one of the groups, down at the Temescal Pool on 45th Street. And I'd like to thank the City of Oakland for accommodating us down there, because not only did they allow us to swim there all summer, they also gave us a fairly nice discount. They, they waived our staff fees for, for most of the summer. So that was also very helpful. About 75 of our families were on the sliding scale, so that's just about half, a little over half. So it really has been a very effective program that we're seeing. We employed 35 young adults. They were our recreation leaders for, for the summer camp. And that includes six ESS students, a couple of which were, were recent graduates. So we're employing people in our, in our community and, and giving them experience that they need. We also had 20 leaders in training. That's our teen program. And they also started doing some of the intergenerational programming that we talked about. They actually ran a event at the Emeryville Senior Center this summer. They planned the ice cream social from start to finish, and it was one of the best ice cream socials we've ever done. So they, they really did a great job. So this is just to give you an idea of what a day was like for, for one of our participants at the camp. This isn't every day, but this is a typical day. So 8:00 AM, we start off just doing games, quiet time, and then we would get into songs, and everybody would, would get into their, their groups with the whole camp. 10:00 AM, they, they might do an art project. We're in the process of repainting our mural that's in the back. I think it's almost done, right? So pretty soon, you'll be able to go back there and see the nice, colorful, brand-new mural that our art teacher has led. At 12, we provided lunch. Actually, the lunch was provided by Alameda County. We just administered it. Was it through the City of Oakland, or was it Alameda County?
Alameda County.
Okay. And that program was open to the public as well, so any child under the age of 18 could walk up the street and make sure that they got fed, if they had no other place to eat lunch. It was, it was open. We always had a banner out front of the Recreation Center advertising that. 1:00, we might go swimming, and 4:00, come back for the dance class, and then, at the end of the day, go home tired, ready for the next day.
How did, how did people get to the pool?
I was going to get into that, save that for a little bit later, but spoiler alert, it was the Emery Go-Round. They provided service for us. So I'll, I'll thank them in advance, but I'll thank them again later. All right, our after-school program, we currently have 184 students at, they're all NEA students, right? Just about, or is there a couple that aren't?
There's only like a very few of them.
So nearly all of them are NEA students. This is the highest number that, that we've ever seen. Around the start of the after-school program last year, they were around 100, 110. And once we instituted the sliding scale in December, January, we started, we started to see those numbers rise. At the end of the school year last year, we had around 170, so we're continuing that upward trend with, right now, 184. And again, those same 75 families are on the sliding scale, so it's accessible to, to everybody, regardless of their ability to pay. We offer six different enrichment programs. Hold my notes here. And they are cooking, art, jewelry, dance, science, and sports. So there's always something going on. And we have a slightly smaller staff, because we don't need to have two different shifts of people. And so we have 26 young people on staff, including two ESS members, or ESS students, I should say. And I'd like to add that the ESS students only work a couple of days a week, so that we don't interfere with their studies, and they still can participate in sports and whatnot. Wait, I wasn't ready. Oh, yeah, I was ready. Okay, so this is what our after-school program looks like on a typical day. At 3:00 PM, we send our staff, actually just a couple minutes shy of 3:00 PM, we send our staff over to Annie Yates to pick up and gather the students that are participating in our program. By the time they get over to the Recreation Center and settled, they begin homework assistance at, at 3:30. We do an hour of homework assistance or reading, or, you know, some kind of intellectual activity every day. 4:30 PM is typically when they would begin their enrichment program, so in this case, would be a cooking class. And then at 6:00, they're ready to go home and, and get ready for the next day. So some of our upcoming events, Dr. Rubio mentioned that we have our October mini-camp to accommodate our students while the, the teachers are, are in training. And that's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, October 7th through 9th. And we're operating that program during both the before-school cares we normally do, as well as the entire school day, so that there will be no interruption of care for those families. And we're, we're providing that free of charge for all of our, our students that are already in the program. And we've actually seen some new students enroll this month, because they want to make sure that they, they get in on that. Other camps that we'll be offering are basically during, anytime the Emeryville Unified School District is on vacation, we're going to be running camps. So anytime that there is a weekday that's not a holiday, we're, we're running camps to make sure that, again, the, the kids have an enrichment program to go to while the parents need care, while the parents need to go to work. And we're off, we're also offering some teen field trips, going to places like Great America, Boomers, ice skating, so that it's, it's never, never boring. There's always something to do. And finally, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank some of our partners that have made these successful programs possible, not the least of which is Annie Yates Elementary, who provided us space during the summer. Since our camp, we've, we've basically outgrown the Recreation Center, and we've been able to expand into Annie Yates Elementary. We currently are utilizing one of the classrooms now for our teen program, as well as the multipurpose room and, and the schoolyard on a daily basis. We're, we're thinking about moving another classroom in there, because we're, we're continuing to build and grow. The EOSD Wellness Center, which has been providing opportunities and resources for parents, including parenting classes, and they, up until recently, they were administering the sliding scale program, which was a great administrative relief for us. Definitely would like to thank the Emery Go-Round, since they provided transportation free of charge for us three times a week all summer long, to take our kids to the Temescal Pool down the road. And they were very happy to do it. So big thank you to Emery Go-Round. The Oakland Youth Employment Program, or YEP, they are a, a program that operates off of International Boulevard, and they provide employment opportunities to at-risk youth. So the way that program would work is that they would recruit the at-risk youth and essentially assign them to our space. So we were able to use them as additional support staff, additional recreation leader types, to help, you know, increase our ratios and provide a little bit more support. And it provided them an opportunity to, to have a job that they might have not have otherwise had. And that was also at no cost to the city. And City of Oakland, again, because they helped us out, are allowing us to, to go to the pool, Temescal Pool. They're going to do that again next summer, and again, they gave us a discount. They, they didn't charge for, for staff admittance for most of the summer. And we're also beginning to have a relationship with RISE. Miguel Dwin encouraged us to, to reach out to them, so we've done that. We don't quite know what that partnership's going to look like yet, but we're, we're definitely going to work with them and, in some meaningful way. All right, so that's, that's my presentation. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Do we have any questions from any other members? Member Atkins?
I just want to make a comment. You must be very proud. This is, this is a terrific report. So I want to, I want to thank you very much for making this program as robust as it's become. And I know our capacity will increase when we have new facilities. So I know everybody's really looking forward to that.
Well, thank you, Ruth. And let me thank you and the rest of the council and, and the school board, because these programs would not be possible without, without your support.
Right, great. Any other members comment?
I have a question. What's RISE stand for?
So RISE, what does it stand for? It stands for Responsibility Inspires the Strive for Excellence. It's a program that's run through UC Berkeley. It's run through, the students at UC Berkeley work with high school-age students, and they put on presentations and other programs. And the way we envision the partnership is that they, they could bring these high school students to, to our program and, and teach them skills or crafts or-
Excellent.
-any, any other kind of information.
Member West?
I just wanted to also comment, you know, congratulations on, on the expansion of this program and filling the need that's clearly there. It's, it's a real benefit to the youth in, in the school district in Emeryville. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I also want to commend you all for a great job. I mean, for me, this is really showing the strong collaboration and the joint use that, you know, both agencies are coming together. And as Member Atkins said, when we, when we move into ECCL, it would, you know, it would be able, allow the partnership just to grow and for the programs just to grow. Thank you very much.
Jill, I have one other comment. This is such an excellent presentation. It's also short, which I like.
That was for you, Nora.
But I think it's important that we present this at the city council, so it can be on the city council TV show, because this is critically important to the quality of life here, for not only our families and children, but for everyone else who's involved. So I would like to see it on a, fairly soon, on the city council agenda, if that's okay with you, Brad.
Sure, sure. Happy to do it.
All right.
Excellent. And if you could just email me your slides, too. I'll include something on my blog. It'd be great.
Sure, no problem.
Excellent job. Thank you both. Okay, we will now move to the next item, ECCL update.
I'll sit for a little bit. Is this you? No, I'm just going to- Oh, okay.
Good evening. I'm John Baker with Swinerton. I think I've spoken in front of you folks before, giving the regular update, the ECCL update for the city schools meeting. First, start with some fun things, some photographs. If you've driven by there this week, you've seen the tops of some very large equipment completing demolition. We actually are now complete with all the demolition and the solar mediation work at the site. What you'll see out there is some equipment that's going to be trucked off the site in a few days. There's just a bit of concrete that actually has got to be carted off. These pictures are about two weeks old that show, after we did the solar mediation work, we actually completed the demolition of the old school slab and footings and foundations. And so all that's left out there right now is a big field of dirt and then the gym. But these are kind of our last photographs of this construction phase. So you'll see the, the tops of these. You may have seen the tops of these moving around like the last couple of weeks. So again, site demolition is now complete. The, what's called the lease-leaseback scope. And against, this is the contract awarded to Turner Construction in August by the city and the, the, the school district. That work is underway. The first phase of that work is in Building E, which is the gym. So what they're doing right now is they're completing demolition and abatement inside the gym. They're getting ready to start the seismic upgrade of the gym, which is the FEMA-funded part of the project. And that seismic upgrade, the actual structural work, will start later this month. A couple of design exercises that we have remaining. First is the pool design. We retained the services of a pool design consultant. About a month ago, they're actually currently doing the pool design drawings. We'll be reviewing those progress drawings this, this month, and it, they should be done by the end of the month. Those then go into the Division of the State Architect for a, an expedited approval, so that we're adding that scope to the project, and so that we can have that done along with the gym. The first phase of the project, which will be complete, which will be next summer, will be the gym renovation and the pool renovation. Also, the Student-Based Health Center now has an operator lifelong. We met with them a couple of weeks ago, and they've reviewed our, the design to date, which was, where we made some, the school district made some plans on, on what that should be. Now that we have their operator on board, they've made some comments, particularly regarding equipment and programs they'll have there, and we'll, we'll make in some adjustments. We need to do that this fall before construction on the, the building itself happens, the walls, et cetera, early next year. We're in the process of closing out the solar mediation. This is the, is, is a, a big portion of the project, which is mitigating all known hazardous substances on the site. This was a process that was about a four-month construction process doing that, so there were a lot of dirt, a lot of dirt moving down there. All that work is now complete with a couple, with a, with a, a couple, with one exception. I'll talk about that in a minute. The first, one good bit of news is that the state allowed us to do some early foundation excavation in order to use the dirt we dug up to put, build foundations and fill back in where we took bad dirt out. So otherwise, we'd have to buy good dirt and bring it to the site. This actually saved us probably about $100,000. And it, we were able to get a jumpstart in also doing that, that, that foundation excavation. The, the other thing we're, we're working on right now is our final report. The report data has gone into the state DTSC, which is Department of Toxic Substance Control. They have been reviewing that and getting comments back to us. The one thing we've got left to do is we had some unforeseen materials near Building A. And so we're in the process of resequencing the work, so we can proceed with construction and come back while we do that last bit of A. The plan is basically so that we can proceed with work and not have those unforeseen materials get in our way. What it was, it was some motor oil and some other things that we need to take out and, and make sure we get that out as well. So we're done with all the other work, and we're now working with the contractor, Turner, to sequence the work, so that we actually do Building A towards the end. The good news is Building A is one of the last ones that we build, so that probably, that won't impact the open date for the high school. Some kind of administrative things. First is budget management. The district is, is implementing a new software program called Accountability. It's an excellent system that is used for K through 12 schools. We have worked managing construction for districts that have this system, and it's great. It works for us. It allows us to track project costs very effectively. Right now, Swinerton's participating with the district in doing staff training. We're letting our expertise using it on a day-to-day basis with other districts, working with the district staff in that training. That's, that training will be, is completing up, I think, this month. And then, once that's done, we're going to have the ECCL project. We're going to use that system to create a state standard budget format. This is important, because it's a very effective tool for tracking project costs and also reporting to the district and the city. So that process is underway, and we're working hand-in-hand with the district's accounting staff. Also, we're, we're, we did our first reading last night for the Owner Controlled Insurance Program. This is a, an excellent program that is offered on a statewide basis by a company called Keenan. And what it does is it pools the risks of a number, of a large number of small districts, so that we have better risk management and lower cost. It's about $300,000 less than what Turner Construction had quoted us on the insurance, so we're saving about $300,000. And also, we have a program that we think is a better, better manages the district and city's risk, because the risk is spread out for a number of districts. So we're in the, we're, these are kind of current administrative things, kind of behind the scenes, not the fun construction activity where there are, where we're digging up concrete and breaking up concrete. But there are things, that, that, these two things will help us much more effectively manage the project and protect the interests of the city and the district. Our next big effort coming up this fall is furniture fixtures and equipment. We call FFNE in the design and construction business. Last year, the architect developed a program, a big list of furniture fixtures and equipment. We, if you recall, when we did the, the JAWA and lease-leaseback agreement, we were able to pare down that budget, because quite a bit of that furniture's already been purchased at the Santa Fe site and also Annie Yates. The city has completely, completed their review of that program we did a year ago and confirm what, what, what needs to go into, into the new ECCL project. And the district now is going to review that. One of our next steps is, is we're creating a committee to go to the Annie Yates site and also the Santa Fe site, where the temporary secondary school is, to tag all the kind, all the furniture that we purchased new or existing, so what that's going to, so we're going to move that over to the site. So I wanted to follow up with this group, that this is our effort to, we had mentioned this when the contract was awarded. It was a way we were having some cost savings. Now we, now, now we're executing this plan, so we'll know which furniture we will need to buy new. But we're going to move quite a bit over from those two sites that has new furniture purchased recently. And that's it for the current update.
Are there any questions from the committee? Any questions from the, from the audience? You have to come to the mic, though.
Thank you, John. My question is, it looks like it's coming along well. There was one item there that you highlighted as an activity that is ongoing now, the pool design. And as part of the Citizens Oversight Committee, its community engagement is one of our missions. And will the community be able to get involved in responding to the design concepts for the pool, when that, when it's at a stage that our community input can be brought to the attention of the design team? the attention of the design team?
We certainly would 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 welcome that input. Right now, we're working with primarily Cindy, who runs the programs that largely use the pool. And I think maybe on our Monday meeting, we can discuss that. We've not yet received the preliminary design drawings, but we certainly can talk about how we would involve the community in that process. I'm not, I'm not certain if that had taken place during the the larger community involvement during design, but we can certainly add that to the mix. We have, we we do want to do it quickly, though, because we want to have have that pool open along with the gym next summer. But I'm happy to talk to the city and the district about how we might do that.
Okay. Member, uh, member Davis?
Yeah, my question concerns the furniture purchase. Could you refresh my memory about how much participation there was from the users of the furniture, the teachers and staff, and also the city recreation staff in the appraisal of the furniture and the purchase of the furniture?
What was done about a year ago with the architectural group is that, and I and I apologize, I was not on board at that time, so I can't speak to that exact process, and perhaps others in the room can do that, that they, there was, the architect worked with some, worked with stakeholders to develop a furniture list. We are starting with that. However, I I want to make sure that we revisit that list, which is kind of what I mentioned earlier, to determine what we really can reuse, what needs to be purchased new. And we, one of our tasks is to to develop a stakeholder group to do that. So that that's one of the, that's what I was mentioning. That's our upcoming task is to work with the district, develop that, to determine what that group is so we can analyze and determine what we need to buy new and what we we can move over to the exist, to the new school that's existing.
I I might just add too that Cindy could probably speak to this because there was some engagement with students, I believe, and the community with coming up with the original list of possibilities, I think. Is that Cindy, could you just add to that for a second?
Yeah, that was prior to John, but there was, the staff from the community services department had input on what furniture and equipment we needed. We just reviewed the list and noticed a couple of things were missing, and so we've given that back to John. And then, as far as the teachers, there was, we had several meetings about furniture and equipment prior again to John being on board.
I think that's extremely important because an architect may have, may have one view of buying things, and and upper staff may have one view, but it's really important that the users have a, an absolute ability to review that and to determine whether or not it's going to be usable. We've seen too many mistakes, not necessarily in Emeryville, but in other jurisdictions, where decisions made at a top level that simply doesn't go in conjunction with what the users have. So I, you're assuring me that that process will take place.
Yeah, we actually, in the community's multipurpose room, we requested to actually see some of the furniture because we don't, we want tables and chairs that are easily moved.
Absolutely.
And not heavy tables like you see here. So so they're taking that into consideration.
And I also believe that the current purchase of some of the new desks came from the stakeholder meetings that you guys had prior, I mean, about a year or so ago. And those desks were bought, and now they're at Santa Fe, and the students are utilizing them now.
Okay. Any other question from any other members?
How does, how does either the school or the city? When there's surplus property, are you restricted by how you dispose of that? For 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 both jurisdictions?
For for school districts in California, there is a process in place in education code that does require that furniture that is being discarded, if I understand your question, has to be listed at a board meeting, has to be announced and before it can be discarded. So I'm not sure if that answers your question completely.
Can it be auctioned off for funds?
You know, I actually, I think it can be, but it has to first go to a board meeting for approval and public notice. But I think it can, I have seen the school district do that.
And then, you know, we we also have the ability to auction some items off, like we auction old, our old fleet off all the time, and we're able to recoup those funds for our general fund.
Good.
Yeah.
Member Wes?
Yeah, I just have a comment, which is I I really appreciate the level of detail that you provided in the update and feel more and more confidence in the oversight and the communication and the new team on board. So I want to just appreciate you for that.
Thanks.
Great. Okay. No other questions? We'll move to the next item D, and that's also Mr. Baker. I say you have it up.
So two, two weeks from today, on October 16th, we're having our groundbreaking ceremony celebration. It's going to consist of, we're going to have out at the site some heavy equipment, similar to the the large yellow construction equipment you saw there. And that's just kind of, that's a kind of, a lot of people think it's kind of fun to look at. We'll also have official shovels for the groundbreaking and a and a big pile of dirt so people can dig up a spade of dirt and and take photographs and that kind of thing. It's always a fun thing to do. We're going to have some, we're working on some project signage to spruce up the site and also to better advertise the project, if you will, to the community, and we hope to have that in place by then. The ceremony location, we're talking about doing it off of 47th, where the the kind of current construction entry is. And so we're going to be working next week with Turner Construction to to coordinate off an area, maybe grade some dirt down so that we can have a nice, clean spot to do that ceremony. The city has been so kind to help us with a seating podium and the coordination of putting that all in place. What we'll be talking about at the Monday city schools meeting, our weekly meeting we have with the city and schools is the speakers and the program. And so all that should be in place by next week so that we can have our groundbreaking ceremony on October 16th.
What time?
I'm sorry, 10 o'clock.
And invitations should, you should be receiving invitations by email today.
Today?
And other community members and partners also.
And will there be media there?
That's our hope. Definitely inviting them and trying to help write the narrative for them. But that's our hope.
Good.
Yeah.
And is it open to the public as well?
Yes.
And I would just like to know.
And are we inviting the governor and good old Tom Torlison?
Right.
Why not?
I spoke to Superintendent Torlison today, and although he is booked out a month, he is interested in coming, so they've asked for the details.
I would imagine this is a really significant project.
Yeah.
I think Assemblymember Skinner should be invited. Because she made the change. Skinner.
Oh, she is. She is.
Is she coming?
I don't know. I didn't get a chance to ask her.
Well, actually, I spoke to her.
Yes, yes, she is.
Okay. And what about some of our local officials? Supervisor Keith Carson?
Invited.
Okay, Lonnie, Lonnie Hancock?
Invited.
Okay.
Keith Carson.
Invited.
Okay.
Barbara Lee? Who are the speakers so far?
So far, Nancy Skinner has expressed an interest in speaking. We're hoping Barbara Lee will also speak. Vice Mayor, if you would like to speak, we would love to have you.
Our, the mayor is not able to attend.
Ten.
Oh, okay. Yeah, count me in.
Yeah.
Yep.
Miguel, I just have a question. I'm a little bemused by the location at 47th Street. When 53rd and San Pablo is much more visible to the traffic, you know, going back and forth on San Pablo Avenue, why did you choose 47th Street?
The the primary reason is that we've, we've done a lot of work out there, a lot of demolition and earthwork. And that's actually a little bit more of a level area with access from the street. We can look into 53rd. We're going to walk, do a walk next week.
Much more visible in 53rd.
There, yeah, and there's also, it's just, that's, that's the current construct entry to the site, and also, it's a little bit easier to, it's not, when you walk out there, you'll see that there are no more pathways and field and parking lots. There's none of that out there anymore. So we have to make sure we can have a, have a place that is safe and accessible, and that's the main concern.
And the dirt that we're going to be digging will be clean dirt, right?
It's all the bad, all the bad spot except for one part of motor oil that I mentioned, which is at the corner of 53rd in San Pablo, by the way, has been taken offsite. It's as clean as dirt gets. That's true.
Are you trucking in clean dirt, or can we use the dirt that's on the site, I'm hoping?
No, the the dirt that's on the site, except for that one spot of motor oil at the corner of 53rd, is is clean.
Great.
Any other questions? Any other requests for any other invitees?
Die five.
All right, let's move to the next item. Item E, information on local ballot measures. And while Sabrina's getting that together, I would like to acknowledge our county supervisor representative here from Supervisor Keith Carson's office, Ms. Asia Brown. Glad to have you.
So I apologize in advance to those of you here. This is going to be a repeat probably of what you have heard ad nauseam. This is really meant to be just a nonpartisan information item for the public that's watching and those of you in the audience, just to give an update on two of the local ballot measures that are on the November ballot. And we'll mention that all of this information you can find on the city's website. There is a very large button that says Election 2014 on our homepage. You can't miss it if you want to find out more about these measures. We've got some FAQs and the actual language of the measures themselves. And the city will also be, I think we have, I believe it's six or seven meetings that are scheduled in the community at the different HOAs and other community centers over the next month, in which we'll be giving the same presentation. So people will be hearing this quite a bit. But I will run through this fairly quickly. And again, I apologize to the council members and board members who have heard this before. We have two measures. They are measures U and V. The two measures were put on unanimously by the city council. The first is the city, the charter city measure, which is measure U, and the property transfer tax measure, which is measure V. Measure U, quite simply, it makes the city of Emeryville a charter city. And some cities in California are organized just under the general laws of the state, governed by the state of California, while others are governed by a charter that's adopted by their local voters. Cities that have their own charter have additional flexibility to adopt their own procedures for their own local municipal affairs so that they don't actually have the state decide those for them. And there are many, many other cities in California, including many in the Bay Area, that are charter cities. Just some examples here, Berkeley, Albany, Piedmont, Alameda, so some large, some small, Oakland are also charter cities. I will, actually, before I get to that, I do want to just mention something about the specific language that we're putting in front of the voters. It is very simple. Again, you can go on our website and read it. And essentially, it says that the city will continue to operate as a general law city with one exception, and that one exception I'll get to, which is under measure V. But that is just to have the ability to charge a real property transfer tax. Everything else will stay the same. So what is measure V and what is a real property transfer tax? So measure V would allow us to collect funds from the sale of property in our city, and it would allow us to generate funds for our, what's called our general fund, which provides the majority of the essential city services and our capital projects. So this is what is important to remember is that only those that are buying and selling the property will pay this tax. This is a one-time tax, and it's paid either by the seller or the buyer. In other cities, that's oftentimes just split 50/50, and it's negotiated. The proposed tax rate that is in front of the voters is a rate of $12 per 1,000 of the property sale value. Right now, the city only has the ability to charge a dollar 10 as a general law city per thousand, and the city is able to retain just half of that, so 55 cents. So this would go from the 55 cents that we currently generate up to $12. Just as an example of what this could generate for our city, if we had this in place last year, we would have received an additional, almost $3 million. Over 35, 85% rather, of the, that revenue would have come from the sales of commercial property. I will note, actually, before I get to this, sorry, I didn't put a slide in here. Both of our neighbors, Oakland and Berkeley, do have a real property transfer tax, and those are actually at a higher rate than the $12 per thousand. This is a question that's come up from several people who've asked kind of some comparisons. They actually have a $15 per thousand in those two cities. So why did the city council decide to place these measures on the ballot? Well, biggest reason is that first bullet right there, which is in 2011, the state eliminated redevelopment agencies. And that resulted in the city losing nearly $30 million annually, which is about half of our budget. That, those dollars were devoted to public improvement projects, affordable housing, and really has had a significant impact on allowing the city to continue to maintain such a high level of city services and our public improvement projects. Some of the measures U and V will allow us to take action locally, like I mentioned, to restore the revenue that was lost by these funds, a portion of the revenue that was lost by these, by redevelopment. And then, as a general law city, as I mentioned before, Emeryville doesn't have the authority to institute this additional real property transfer tax, and so we're losing millions of dollars annually that other cities are not. Again, just giving people just an order of magnitude, when the towers, the high-rise down in the peninsula was sold, our city missed out on collecting more than $2 million just in that one transaction alone. And only by becoming the charter city under measure U would we have the ability to legally collect these funds from property owners when they purchase or sell the property in our city. This just gives a list of some examples of what could be funded, what will be funded if, further funded, if we pass these measures. And as you can see there, we are talking about core services of the city. And if you have additional questions about this, please feel free, visit our website. And like I mentioned, click on the November 2012, uh, 2014 link. And also feel free to contact my office if you have any questions about this. And that's it.
Do we have any comments from the public? Any comments from any other members?
No, I just have the second part of this item.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just wanted to let everyone know, as as most of you probably do know, the school district as well has a measure on the ballot in November, which is measure K. Today, when Public Superintendent Torlison was here for the press conference, I did share that one of our partnerships, as I mentioned earlier, besides with the city, is really with our, with our parents. And our existing parcel tax actually makes up about 25% of our school district budget right now. So our ballot measure is a request to the community to continue at the same tax rate to continue supporting the programs. We have the additional science teacher, we have, science teachers, we have the additional art teacher, we have small class sizes that we have. So that's there. And on Tuesdays and Thursday nights, I understand there was some great support from many of you on the phone banking that we did in the past. So just so everybody knows, phone banking has started again, and that is occurring at the Armstrong, is it Windows is Armstrong?
Floors.
Floors, sorry. Floors, okay. At 4575 San Pablo Avenue every Tuesday and Thursday from 5:30 to 7:30. So right now, there are some teachers over there and other staff who are making phone calls in regards to this item.
Great. Any questions? Any question from the public? Comments, questions?
When does the current parcel tax expire?
The current parcel tax expires, just to get this correct if I can, we are going to, June of 2017.
Okay. All right. With that being said, we'll move to the next item, which is an action item that we cannot take.
Miguel, we can't, it doesn't necessarily have to be put on the agenda as an action item, as long as there's a consensus of the members here, that's fine. It can, it can go either way, so we'll not have.
Nobody's going to turn out January 1st.
Right, really. Right, 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 right. So we would just say that the January meeting will be scheduled for January 8th, 2015. Great.
Good job.
With that being said, we will adjourn. Thank you all.
I have a question, and something that I forgot to ask about during this, the committee member comments, which is that traditionally, around this time of year, we get a a report from the school district on enrollment and the numbers. And I know we don't have another meeting, I guess, until January, but it would, it would be nice to have an enrollment report, you know, simply the numbers of students and where their and where they're attending from, et cetera. So, we've had that in the past years, I know.
Could we have that as an information item in the next city manager's report? If you could get together with-
That'd be great.
Good, good. Yeah.
Look at last year's report, yeah.
We've, we've also been particularly interested in the out-of-district transfers, the numbers, the percentage, how much from Oakland's 94608.
Sure. And that same structure as last year? Did we have that structure set up last year? Okay, we'll do the same, sure.
You got it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Great meeting.
Great.